Where you are, we've double checked and we're all good. It wasn't a conditional reason. All right, then we will take a roll call vote, then the clerk is ready.
Commissioner Brazen?
Yes.
Cassio?
Yes.
Gerink?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Azar?
Yes. Wonderful, that motion passes. Thank you, ma'am.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for all of your help and time.
Yeah, through the chair, just additional comment, I think you've already heard it, but that was a very responsive approach to this site, so I really appreciate that. So I just wanted to really reiterate that. It seemed like a great example of responding to some of the concerns and addressing them creatively, so appreciate that.
Thank you guys. Well, we look forward to building the suite project here in Ferndale again.
Again, with being the keyword.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Alrighty. So our last item this evening, our discussion item. This is our first time taking, there's no action on this, this is our first time taking a look at something that Justin and Aaron have been working on for a while. Potential updates to mixed use and residential zoning districts. So we'll have an introduction from Justin. I will see if there are any questions or comments from the public, and then we'll take questions and comments from the commission.
Great. So yeah, really excited to bring forth some work that Aaron and I worked on with Smith Group on some potential updates to some zoning ordinance that align with the master plan and kind of pick up, I think, where we left off with the downtown ordinance. Not that we're trying to turn other areas of the city into downtown, but in providing an ordinance that is more prescriptive with form and design rather than, I think, you know, it's the traditional zoning ordinance, this actually will, I think, help give architects and developers better guidance on how, you know, Ferndale's not looking for cookie cutter developments and looking for some creativity, but also things that fit within the character of Ferndale. And not just, not just new developers and, you know, architects, but also people living here who want to upgrade their homes as well. And maybe modify things and, you know, add a second level or bedrooms and things like that. I think this sort of helps guide folks. And so, like I said, or like Chair Baker said, this is kind of our first crack at it, and hopefully we picked up a lot of what we've been talking about, but as you saw in the packet, we had some key questions, and so I want to make sure that everybody has time to react to that and provide some feedback to that, and also the community that is here this evening, if they're here to talk about this project too, would love to hear their feedback as well. So as I said, you know, a lot of our research and guidance was rooted in the master plan, so there was a lot of discussion about design standards, guidelines, form-based code, making sure that the city that, you know, we live in now, that we, that we know now, it is walkable and does have a mixed-use urban pattern, but how do we continue that with an updated zoning code that reflects some of the things and some of the challenges we've seen with some of the developments where we may not have been quite as happy with what we were given, partially because of the code that we had, and you know, I think that's not a unique situation. The Ferndale zoning codes do need to evolve and, you know, change with the times. So specifically, R2 and R3 standards were called, or zoning districts were called out as ways that could be looked at to provide more housing options. Mixed use 1 and 2 districts also making sure that we're, it's been a district that has been very flexible in the past, and we're not trying to, you know, lessen the flexibility, but also probably provide a little bit of guidance there. And so, you know, the overall goal, goal number two in the master plan was to revise some zoning regulations and ensure that we're promoting development that's appropriate, and then providing that housing choice. So if you remember a couple of years ago, we did, right after the master plan, we did make some zoning ordinance changes, and that was kind of the first step, and this potentially will provide more guidance, we think. So these were the questions that I included in the planning commission packet. So, you know, things that we've talked about in the past couple of the years with related to building width, that missing middle housing that, you know, we think there's a demand for in Ferndale. Are there some examples that we like that are already in Ferndale that, you know, perhaps we could learn from? If we want to have a walkable city, should we be limiting driveways in, you know, this is particularly for larger residential projects and commercial districts, but limiting to one driveway per frontage. And if someone does want to have two fronts, or two driveways, they should maybe make the case for that. What should the housing, or the parking requirements be for housing? Should, you know, right now it's based on number of units, should it be based on bedrooms? We're seeing, you know, some smaller units being proposed. Do those units need as much parking as some of the larger developments that have been in Ferndale for in the past? And then we have, you know, a lot of properties on Hilton, on Laverneuy that, you know, they're essentially not conforming sites. There's a whole laundry list of permitted uses in the mixed-use district that it would be basically impossible for them to meet the off-street parking requirement. So are there trade-offs? Is there incentives to, to give through zoning that would encourage those permitted uses, or, you know, are we, are we fine with what we have right now? And then, you know, I think we've seen it with some projects around the city now. There are some modern, modern architecture being, projects being put together and developed in the city, and then, you know, how do those fit the neighborhood character and exist and be compatible with their existing character here? So this is just kind of a simplified proposed uses chart for residential districts, so not really much is changing here. We could consider, you know, if, you know, single-family attached townhomes in R2, right now it's a special land use. You know, I don't know a lot of the history into what was decided in making them a special land use, but, you know, should that just be a permitted use? Should we add, you know, two-family dwellings is what it's been called in the zoning ordinance now. We, you know, we know that is a duplex, but triplexes are something else that, you know, could be an option that provides some variety, maybe adding that to the permitted uses for R2, 3, and 4. This is just another snapshot of what some of the examples already in Ferndale look like for single-family detached. Obviously, that's our, you know, main housing unit in Ferndale. That's not something we're looking to change whatsoever, really not touching the R1 districts and their regulations, but just kind of saying and noting, you know, that is, that is a frontage we already have in Ferndale. Most, most Ferndale homes, a lot of them at least, have that front stoop sort of look and design to them. There are some existing duplexes and even triplexes in the city. You know, there, there's some in R1, we wouldn't permit new ones in R1, but R2 and R3 and mixed use and mixed use 2 and in the central business district, that kind of fits that urban flex frontage type that we approved earlier this year. Townhome houses, I mentioned, we do have some in the city, providing some more guidance on those regarding number of units and appropriate width for buildings, and that, we'll get into that in a bit. And then obviously, you know, multiple-family dwellings is kind of what we've seen a rise of, particularly in downtown. And so, I'll kind of go to the next slide and show you, you know, frontage types that, that we're considering. So this might be a little tough to see where you're at, but this is kind of an updated version of the regulations chart. What we're proposing is more of a form-based standard, so if you look at the standards now, there's, you know, a standard for lot width and lot coverage setbacks, but that's really it. So this provides some more design elements, and so as I mentioned before, this is to promote some new housing types that integrate within these districts, but also consider distance between, you know, it minimizes the impact on neighbors. So right now, the zoning ordinance has a specific separate section for multiple-family dwellings that talks about building width. It does get kind of confusing with that being a totally separate section, so what we did is fold it specifically into this district. So there is a facade with maximum, there is a lot with maximum, and we think that will potentially help with some of the conversations we've had about, you know, making sure that these sites, you know, you don't need to build the maximum amount on a single site. You need to also factor in impervious surface and, you know, private open area and things like that, so it's not just a completely built-out specific site. We took a look at front setbacks. You know, I think those have varied, they, I mean, as they should, between districts. But there's been this footnote that's been in the zoning regulations chart that, you know, factors in all of the homes on the street nearby, and the base, so for example, in R1, it says the front setback in the old ordinance, or in the existing ordinance is 25 feet. And there's very few, I would say, sites on, in Ferndale that meet that requirement, so being a little bit more realistic. If you do want to encourage, you know, more of a walkable urban pattern, we think that these setbacks are probably more appropriate than what's proposed in the ordinance right now. We also included setbacks that are in the rear. So in the commercial districts, we've talked about how at the, the back of properties, we really want to be sure that we're having an appropriate scale that transitions to the neighborhoods nearby. So we kind of mirrored that here in the R3 and R4 districts, where you may get some of those multiple-family projects. Above the third story is where, basically at the rear of the property, there would have to be a rear setback, which helps limit, you know, shadow and, you know, balconies facing people's backyards and things like that. We clarified a bit with access, so we already don't allow front, parking in the front yard. But we're now doing, I think, this ordinance is a little bit better job of requiring vehicle access from an alley if there's one president, or present. And clarif, you know, that's not going to be realistic everywhere, but I think that, you know, it's important to use those alleys that we've said in the master plan are an asset. We have some question marks in there for impervious surface, you know, balancing lot coverage with buildings with, you know, what is that appropriate amount of impervious surface? I think right now in R1 and R2 districts, it's 40%. R3 is 70%. I think the intent with that was that just, just trying to allow for more density on site, you know, is 70% the right number? That's something, you know, that we definitely have a question going into this with you all in. And then the bottom portion, you can see design elements. So fenestration, that was a new added element that really focuses on, you know, glass and, and primary frontages being, you know, more welcoming to the pedestrian and more visually interesting. So for in those districts where we do allow for some multiple-family dwellings like R3, you know, making sure that there is a good balance and some, some variety rather than just a flat wall that's completely closed off and, you know, no one's really interacting with, with their neighbors there. So along with, excuse me, let me just go back real quick. So the questions at the bottom, facade width, you know, we kind of had thought, you know, 150 feet, or excuse me, 100 feet could be appropriate for an R3 and maybe for an R4, which is, you know, only a few sites in the city are really zoned R4, they're near downtown, they're where Housing Commission, you know, existing sites are, you know. So there may not be really a need in the future, you know, but, but that's kind of where density has been proposed, so 150 feet, you know, is that more appropriate there than R3? Project we talked about earlier was on that 150-foot range. So, you know, seeing that, there's also, you know, seeing that, is that really appropriate in those districts?
M district though, wasn't it?
MXD.
MXD.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Yep. So we also looked at the different frontage types for the mixed-use districts. So we're talking about Hilton, we're talking about Laverneuy, some of West Nine Mile. You know, if you look at the regulations chart right now, there's a lot of dashes, which, you know, does allow for flexibility, but as we've seen, maybe there's a way to, to push projects to consider some, some of the form that we think fits within Ferndale and considers that walkability factor. So there's a lot more regulations in here, but similar to downtown where we talked about primary frontages and secondary frontages. So, you know, the primary frontage build-to percentage in downtown is much higher. In mixed use, we started with 50%, thinking that some of those sites are smaller, they may need to have parking in the side yard. So should we be considering 50% rather than say an 80%? That's, I think that's what downtown is right now. The two frontage types similar to downtown, but, you know, different scale, storefront and stoop. So storefront is kind of, you know, more of, more of a retail, commercial-type frontage that we've seen, whereas the stoop is probably something that would be more oriented toward, you know, townhomes and things like that. The primary facade widths, we had that same question here for mixed-use districts. But we also added some setbacks that I don't think were really clear in the existing ordinance, where in the rear yard, we, you know, adjacent to a residential district, we do think there needs to be a buffer between any of these, you know, developments and the adjacent residential existing homes. And we also have that rear setback above the third story. We already don't allow parking in the front yard for mixed-use districts either, which is good, but also encouraging the alley access, just like we are for those other districts. And then you can see here in the design elements section, we are recommending, there's some more factors because, you know, things like ground floor height. 14 feet is kind of something where it's more, lends itself more to a commercial retail-type use. So having that minimum, you know, makes people consider, you know, we would like to have, you know, a store on the ground floor and some perhaps office or residential up top. But really, making that a requirement makes it less of a question, and, you know, some of the projects that we've seen over the years in those districts where we said, well, how can we get you to, you know, consider doing mixed use rather than just a solo apartment building? This, I think, will, will help without, without making a full-on requirement for that. Primary pedestrian access, we do have, we have mentioned over the years, we do want that on Woodward Heights, we want that on Laverneuy and Hilton. And so making sure that there's an entrance required as part of that clears up, I think, some of the gray that we've had in the past. So this is just an image we've talked about, back and forth, like, you know, what is the appropriate width of a building? Where do we want to see that broken up so we don't have all these blocks that are sort of mega blocks where it's kind of uncomfortable for pedestrians without, you know, an access to cut through or, or see some green in between a long building? So 125, 100, currently 150 is the max. So, you know, with 100, you can see there, that does require splitting the buildings and, you know, perhaps adding more green and pervious surface rather than, you know, just maxed-out sites with concrete everywhere. And this is just an example based on if, if you had a townhome project with rear garages. Currently, we do have some access standards in, mostly in the parking design ordinance and related to driveways. Right now, you can have two driveways per street frontage. There's 50 feet apart for requirements for driveways and things like that, but we think that, you know, driveways are not necess, a lot of, a lot of the projects we've seen, projects we've seen in the past, it doesn't, two driveways is not really, you know, something that helps pedestrians or people on bikes or other people, or even cars just driving by, having two different driveways to look at. So if we reduce that allowance to one driveway and putting it on the applicant really to say, I need, I do need to, and they need to demonstrate why, whether it's with the traffic study or something like that, then that is on them to do. It's probably not realistic for, and I don't think we really want someone to build, you know, all of the parking that, you know, comes with a lot of these projects. So if there's opportunities for shared access and cross-access through alleys and things like that, you know, that's something that we can build into this. And then making sure that driveways are actually aligned. And so we didn't really get into the weeds and the fine details of this, but, you know, that's something we can provide at the next meeting. We talked a lot about parking, I mean, it's been a conversation throughout the city and, you know, for every project that, that's came through this, this board. Currently, you can see the requirements for multiple-family and single-family, you know, attached and duplex projects. But we've also seen a lot of these projects have smaller units, you know, some as low as, you know, 700 square feet, 600 square feet. Should we be looking at, you know, parking based on bedrooms rather than units? I think that's kind of open for discussion. Not everyone has two cars. And, you know, it, I think the other thing we've seen too is the more parking you build, the more expensive it makes the project, and so that could make someone, you know, choose not to do some, or some open space, or may, that may tip the scales from them doing mixed use. So how do we, how do we factor that in on some of our smaller sites? But we also, you know, we know there's trade-offs. We do want to make sure that trees are preserved. Anytime you over-require parking, there's that, that balance where trees versus parking is not something we want to, you know, go back and forth about. And then impact on neighborhoods, so having, adding a whole lot of new parking that can be, kind of change the character of a neighborhood as well. So up next, I just have a few examples of, you know, what these, you know, these are just floor plans of what people can, could consider if they wanted to develop something in Ferndale based on new regulations, and it really was helpful to have the Smith Group team help basically just lay out certain site plans based on, you know, instead of just guessing what the ordinance will give you, this is, you know, a true-to-life example of what it, what it could be. This is the, in the mixed-use 1 and 2 districts, a townhome that has have access to, a project that has access to an alley. And so we, we think that, you know, these visuals are, can help guide projects, but also we have created a sort of a draft housing manual that would be, that would go with the ordinance. That kind of helps, like with downtown, we, we had sort of a little guidebook, user guide that showed, you know, how to use this ordinance, and this, I think, would, would help with that. So this is using the stoop frontage type for townhomes, and that's sort of what the ordinance would give you. So less curb cuts focusing on garage access through an alley. If there wasn't an alley present, this is something that still could provide, you know, the required parking on site, but also still not put another curb cut, you know, on a major primary frontage. So more access from the side street. In an R3 district, this is also, you know, a corner lot example, where you may want to have that walkable entrance to the main structure off of the side street, and then some of the parking, you know, in the rear. But does have, includes some on-street parking if you were to consider going on a bedroom basis rather than a unit basis. In R3, so something that may be more mid-block, I feel like we do have a few examples of these in Ferndale now. And we do, we do actually permit, I don't know why this says consider, we do actually permit tandem parking. It's been more of on a, you know, management basis for whoever's doing that project, but that's just an example of how you could provide those spaces behind the building potentially with an alley. Another townhome sort of example that may not have alley access, I mean, it would probably be pretty tough for someone to acquire three parcels to make that sort of thing happen, but just an example of something you could, you could do. And we think this provides a little bit more open space in the rear than I think probably what the current ordinance allows. But this is an example of a one or 100-foot building, just to give you a sense of, you know, if the lot's 150 feet, that still allows for the driveway access requirements and meets the open space as well. Just another example of us, another small apartment building that I feel like we do have some of these existing in Ferndale now. But an example of parking on the side, this, I would say this is kind of similar to the Ferndale House Phase 2 project, but more open space provided, more room for trees provided. We didn't touch on PUDs a ton at this stage, that's kind of something separately we're working on, but, you know, in talking about housing, just talking about how, you know, it is very tough for people that want to reuse an existing, you know, historical, not historical, but, you know, structure that has historic character. It's really not something that accounts for, it's accounted for in R3 and mixed-use districts. So one thing we're looking at with the PUD ordinance is, is changing that 80% requirement in R1. That's something that needs more, I would, more study, I would say, but something we'll be bringing to you at a separate meeting. But just, you know, it kind of acknowledges the challenge that, that we've had of, of reuse, I think, lately in the city.
80% requirement for R1?
If a site, if, so if you're, if a site is zoned R1 and you wanted to pursue a PUD, you'd have to provide 80% R1, single-family detached units. So, you know, we've been talking, I mean, there's a lot of zoning regulations here, but, you know, should there be accompanying design guidelines? We're kind of putting together this draft, Missing Middle Housing Manual, and so a lot of these things, I think, could go in there without being hard and fast regulations. Some, some things that we'd want to update over the years and change as policy rather than full-on zoning requirements. So configurations of windows and doors, finished standards, I think those change with the times and depend on the neighborhood portion of, you know, Ferndale where you're developing a project. How's that street wall look? What are the porch and entrance standards? So we talked about, you know, should we have, like, design standards as heavy as we did for the Central Business District? I don't, that's kind of what we want to know from you all, what you're, what you're expecting or what makes sense for that. But we just kept going back and forth on, you know, what are things that have been built lately that, you know, we wish were better designed? And, you know, were there things that could have been guidelines that could have prevented that? I think we addressed some of that with, you know, the building widths and frontage types, but, you know, these are some of the finer-grain details where, I mean, tonight we were talking about color, we were talking about different types of metal paneling, are those things that we want in a, maybe not in the ordinance, but in a design guide and housing manual document? So the next few slides are just mostly examples of when we say attached residential, you know, what does that mean? Typically, that's townhouses. These are just, you know, examples from all over, but just to give you a spectrum of what other, you know, communities have and, you know, what makes sense for Ferndale, and that probably means something different for everyone, but, you know, you can see probably some more traditional townhomes in the top left and maybe a little bit more modern architecture, but still has, you know, I think some of the peaked roofs that we do see in Ferndale too. So things that we were just looking at as examples. Duplexes and triplexes, you know, there are some, I think, good examples around that do blend in unless you look very closely. A lot of times, I think there's some in Ferndale where I've been fooled, where I, you know, I think it's a single-family home, but really it is, you know, a two-unit building that, you know, fits, fits in just fine in an R3 district. And then, modern architecture, we've seen a little bit in some of the newer projects in Ferndale lately. These are just some random examples, not, not from Ferndale, obviously, but, you know, some things that, you know, we like, some things we don't. You know, some of the brick elements are nice, some of the, the wood cedar look, I think, you know, can make sense in certain areas of the city. But, you know, are these types of things that we'd want in this missing middle housing manual? As telling people that, you know, if you're considering building here or updating your home, this, these are some things that, you know, could make sense. So focusing more on the mixed-use, actual use regulation, so we took a look at mixed-use 1 and mixed-use 2. Really, mixed-use 1 is pretty much just focused around, you know, Mar, West Marshall Street. You know, this is not a deep dive, obviously, but it really just seemed that, you know, some of the more intense uses like banquet halls and production facilities and, you know, vehicle uses weren't permitted in mixed-use 1 as of now. A lot of you, I think, were part of the master plan update and zoning update from 2008 or 2010, so potentially, you know, we want to talk about that. We, I think, it's been pretty clear, you know, going forward in mixed-use 2, most of us feel that, you know, it's not really necessary to have a gas station in some of these mixed, mixed-use 2 sites where, you know, the lots are small and you're right adjacent to residential, so maybe removing those vehicle-type uses from the chart. And then I think we've been talking a lot about, you know, is there ways that zoning can incentivize mixed use? You know, some of the design standards we're proposing, I think, will help guide that, but without requiring ground-level active street, street-level uses like commercial or office or restaurant or something like that, how can we, you know, are we willing to look at parking a little bit differently to allow for some of that mixed use? Are we, would you allow, you know, a different building with, a little bit wider building with, if, if someone was to provide commercial use on the ground floor? So something I think we're talking about. We already talked about some of the parking challenges and requirements. And then, you know, West Marshall Street from Allen to challenges and requirements. And then, you know, West Marshall Street from Allen to Woodward, it's challenging there. We've heard from business owners that they can't really update their buildings or add new tenants that have, you know, some of more, some of the more, some of the permitted uses really there because there's not, you know, even on street parking for the city there. So is that something we should evaluate? I think yes. And we've kind of been looking at that. West Marshall Street is not due for redesign for quite some time, but something that I think that we we could think about, maybe with a grant opportunity in the future. Just a couple of existing examples around town. So this is in the mixed use one district on Marshall, kind of fits some of, you know, the characteristics we're talking about. It does have alley access. There's a shared stoop in those, you know, patios out front. But it's a building that only requires one spot per unit. You know, I have not, I don't live in the neighborhood. I haven't, you know, talked to neighborhoods nearby to see if, you know, that is a challenge or not with parking and things like that. But from a forums forum perspective, other than the parking, I think, you know, it fits a lot of what we've been talking about. This is an example of the corner of southwest corner of Pinecrest and West Nine Mile. So the picture on the left, it's a former dry cleaner. If you were to build something new on that site, those red lines indicate essentially where the building would have to be set, which is kind of where it is right now. But it does have a lot of parking right, you know, at a prime corner on Nine Mile. Under the new zoning ordinance, you'd probably get something more like the picture on the right. So the parking would be on the west side, potentially close that frontage on Nine Mile and that is a public alley to the west, perhaps, you know, using that public alley for access instead would eliminate, you know, a curb cut on the corner. But part of the reason that the picture on the left is shown, the current front front setback requirement is, you know, there's a lot of the buildings are set back very far in that R one district to the south of that building on Pinecrest. And so it essentially limits, you know, meeting some of the requirements that we have currently in mixed use, which is, you know, parking in the front yard and, you know, having a presence right on the street corner there. So, you know, something to consider, you know, a real life example of how siding for a building could change with the with the zoning ordinance update. So covered a lot real quickly there. I'm just going to go back to the questions area and we can kind of talk through sections if we want, but wanted to at least get all those ideas out there upfront.
Thank you. Typically, I would jump to questions or comments from the public, but I know Ian needs to leave in five minutes. So we're just going to jump to Commissioner Williamson first.
Yeah, I'll just give some quick feedback on these. Obviously, a lot of this wasn't available to us before we came in tonight. But on the key questions that you proposed to us earlier, as to the maximum building width, my feeling is that if anything, I would look at maybe reducing that width as opposed to increasing it at all. I feel like we've seen a couple of developments at this point that where where we've given variances on building width and we've ended up with some very monolithic structures. And I don't, my perception is that these aren't really fitting into the fabric of the city the way maybe we'd like them to. When we had the Robertson Brothers project down at Taft site, they were also proposing some very long monolithic blocks. We forced them to break those up. I think that project ended up being the better for it. So I would have concerns about going beyond 150. And in some of the proposed, some of the proposed changes for consideration, I did notice a couple of areas where it looked like there could potentially be width as much as maybe 300 feet, where where we there were a couple areas where there could be up to six attached units on the same parcel. And each attached unit would be permitted 50 feet worth of frontage. So.
Definitely not the intent, but yeah.
Unless that was, no, no, on the on the ones that, on a couple of the slides that we saw earlier. And it could be that that is also subject to the overall max width. But that's something if we were going to go in that direction, I think we would certainly want to clarify that, that just because you can have 50 feet of width per unit and just because you can have up to six units on this parcel, doesn't mean that you can add these all together and have up to 300 feet of building width.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
As far as the overall missing middle housing, I think we do still have a pretty wide range of, a pretty wide range of sizes and home values in Ferndale, even with upward market pressure, which I think we're now seeing a little bit of reversal on. I've seen a lot of pricing start to go down a little bit in Ferndale, which for people that have lived here for a long period of time and are maybe have felt like they're starting to get priced out, I think that's a good thing. That said, we do still have, and I think we're still missing with some of the newer developments that we've seen come in and proposed, we're we're still getting squeezed on the on rental housing, I think, that's in a range of the maybe more of the $500 to $800 per unit rental range. We're seeing almost all the proposed new rental developments have been luxury apartments. You know, that that's an area where I think we're, we're seeing a reduction in availability and we're not seeing proposed development that's that's really fitting that area. So, you know, smaller buildings, smaller apartment buildings closer to downtown that are not necessarily luxury buildings, more projects like triplexes or fourplexes and appropriate residential zoning districts like R three and R two districts, getting in closer to the downtown area would maybe help to fill that missing middle gap, but then also allow for a more gradual transition of density getting into the downtown center. As far as the parking requirements, I agree with the the concerns that you don't want the parking requirement to 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 result in massive amounts of impervious surfaces on on parcels. At the same time, I also feel like having it having the parking requirement may help to reduce the overall scale of some proposed developments that we might see. And what I also don't want to see is people that are just maxing out the actual building volume and number of units, which we might see if we looked at significantly reduced requirements. So in a sense, it will be kind of trading one problem for another. And that's the issue. That's where we have to try to find some kind of a balance. And I don't have a magic bullet for that one. It just occurred to me that we might be trading one concern for another. Let me see, going quickly through these other ones here. I agree with the concern about Marshall. I think that there is, you know, those properties on Marshall are languishing and it's, I think, probably very difficult for anything to happen with those properties unless the parking situation for Marshall is addressed. I'd certainly be in favor of something being done to address Marshall. And if there are similarly situated areas in the city, I'm not really aware of any, that's kind of a unique little street there with those commercial, Hilton to some extent, but Marshall really has no parking going for those those little properties. So some type of parking waiver or something for those for that area, I think, is probably necessary for anything meaningful to be done commercially with that little district, which is actually intended and clearly built as a commercial district, a small one, but a commercial district. As far as developments that we have seen that we'd like to try to avoid in the future, you know, the if you look at the Ferndale House building from the back, it looks like a gigantic galvanized covered shoebox. And it's, it is still, I think, better than the alternative of having the two buildings connected together that they were proposing at one time. But having those vast swaths of galvanized metal siding on buildings is a trend that we're seeing repeated in development proposals that I think is really moving away from the visual field of the city. That's, I know for, you know, price control purposes architecturally, that that seems, it seems like that's really a favorite option right now. But I'm having concerns as I see the development proposals that were being shown. I don't think that that's the direction visually that most of the residents of the of the city are going to want to see the city moving in. So I, I like the idea of putting together a policy book that 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 addresses some things, basically showing some things that we like and things that we would like to avoid. And if a developer wants to move in the direction of using things that we've that we're saying that we would like to avoid, putting some onus on the developer to give us some reasons as to why it makes sense for that specific project. Yeah, that's about, that's about what I have comment wise. I appreciate you letting me jump the line and get that in. I do have actually to get back quickly because my kids are going to be on their own in about five minutes here. So.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. And thanks for letting us know that you had to go. So thank you very much. We have, okay, let me jump back. This is, like I said, this is a discussion item. There's no action on this this evening. And I do want to make sure that we allow time for questions or comments from the audience. So I guess we can do kind of an informal, you know, thing as if we were doing a public hearing. So I'll keep an eye on the clock. But if if folks have questions or comments on this discussion, come on up to the podium if you'll state your name and address for the record. And then, like I said, I'll kind of keep an eye on the clock, but, you know, about three minutes. But if you've got a few extra questions, that's also fine. It's not a formal public hearing or anything like that. It's just a discussion item.
Welcome.
Thank you. Evelyn Elster, 760 West Drayton. I have a question in regards to the R three designation. I'm going to use West Drayton Church as an example.
Yep.
Okay, you're maxing out the footprint per unit at 1,000. And you're limiting the number to six. So the developer that I understand that church has online right now is going to go directly from R one to R four. Which the sky is the limit because there's no max on R four.
So how the building footprint conversation would interact with that number of units that you could build on the site in R four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Design House is bad enough. Now you're saying, you know, we'll go directly to R four, since developers are being encouraged. We'll go directly to R four and then the sky's the limit? Is that is that the next plan? Is this our punishment for not laying down the first time?
I, we don't really need the editorializing because we don't have a plan in front of us. But so that I think that's a great question about between the, so there's a building footprint per unit maximum, and then there's a number of units maximum, and how would those interact? That is a great question.
And it was, it went from 30 down to 12 or down to, no, actually, it went from 40 something down to 30. And people are asking for 12, but now you're saying six. So that would go directly to an R four. And and the thing with the parking, the parking's just fine. Don't be, don't be lower in the parking now. Most people have two cars. If a couple moves in, each one of them has a car, each one of them has a job that they go to. May come back. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Al Benchich. I live on West Marshall. First, I had a question. This presentation, is that located on the city's website or somewhere? We could look at it?
Not to my knowledge.
When will that happen? Tomorrow? Tomorrow? Okay. I'm sure we paid the Smith Group a lot of money for the that presentation there. But it really scares me. I don't know who's, I know this, the city master plan calls for this density, increasing the density, like we're some new suburb. This is a mature city. And you've already taken up almost every available open space in Ferndale for housing that hasn't been completed yet. So we don't even know what the results and what the effects of all this housing we've allowed to happen already is going to be. I mean, go down Pinecrest at three o'clock or five o'clock or come down Nine Mile at five o'clock. And these apartments aren't even open yet. And and most of this housing is just starting to take off. I don't know what kind of city people want here. None of my neighbors want to see more and more density because that means less and less parking. That means more traffic problems. That means less permeable land to absorb the water when it rains. It means more heat radiated or absorbed, actually, by these buildings. And I stay on here, you want to take, oh, we'll knock down three houses and put up five because we'll make smaller lots. I mean, sorry, I don't know his name, but he was voicing some of the concerns I have, but I guess I'm going to voice it my way. It scares me. And I don't know, where are you going to put these new developments, all these new apartments and townhouses? Where are they going to go? Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, Kate. Yeah, Dave Cottrell from 16 Tambofield. Basically, some of us are here from southwest Ferndale. And I guess I'm just noticing, I guess I would like to, when the planning commission is starting to, you know, consider changes like this, I would like to see more people from different neighborhoods come here. Like, our group is trying to pay attention to what's happening with the planning commission because we'd like to keep the forest. It is at at eight in Pinecrest. And we'd really like to keep the whole forest. And we're trying to keep an eye on what's going to, through the planning commission. And of course, people near Drayton Avenue Presbyterian Church are paying attention. But a lot of people just aren't paying, wouldn't be paying attention. So I'd really love to see a better way that people in other neighborhoods, like near Taft School or along Hilton, would actually know about it. So it is just what happens here since tonight or gets discussed tonight doesn't just become a big surprise of, and yes, I completely sympathize with people with West Saratoga who are be standing, you know, sitting in that, having a house behind a parking structure or something zoned, like talking about setbacks, I don't know what the exact setback would be between what was zoned for on West Troy, which would be behind the houses in West Saratoga. But that would be still like, why would anybody want to live on West Saratoga? And proposing changes of housing near the neighborhood, it's like, you know, God, I'd want to get away from West Saratoga or West Troy and move to, like a friend of mine in the neighborhood did, to Rochester Hills. So I guess I'd just like to see more people being notified of these meetings. So more participation in the neighborhood becoming. And I am concerned about density and the lack of traffic control now. And I don't really like the the use when we were doing planning of having the universal standards about how much, you know, how much traffic the roads can take when I always see traffic going 40 miles an hour on Pinecrest. And we don't control that. We don't control any residential neighborhoods park speeding unless I keep on notifying and tell the police exactly what day the guy will be coming and what time. So it's just like, it's, we're getting away from a walkable city and just like a congested mess. So, thank you.
I am trying to be as nice as I possibly can under the circumstances, by the way. Aesthetics really are important. And the character of this city has everything to do The look of the city, the feel of the city is why we moved here in the first place. To attempt to To attempt to urbanize the whole city at this point is so wrong. It would change the entire character. And we may not be so popular if you change the character. And I think the money mongers are going to be on the run here real shortly. So getting into something and jumping into something with both feet, and the tide may change relatively quickly here. So getting involved in something like this. What I would like to see is this list that I printed out from, from Justin's questions, proposal, whatever. What do we have now as opposed to this? I'd like to see what is in place now, oh, sorry, and, and what this proposal changes. I think that would be really, really important to see what we have and what we're going for. And I kind of like the master plan the way it is. I think it pretty much covers all the bases. It leaves some leeway here and there. But I think the ordinances, I don't, I don't think we want to cater to money mongers, plain and simple. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments? All right, we'll go back to the commission. This was like a metric ton of information. The couple pages that we, you know, that we had in advance, I know I certainly had questions and comments on, we, we talked about a couple. So I guess in addition to questions, comments, thoughts for Justin and Aaron to, to chew on as they go back to work on this, I'd also be looking for, you know, thoughts from the commission as to maybe how this process might go. Because there was just sort of a, the, the presentation had a, had a ton of, of meat. That's really, I, I almost wanted like a redo of our conversation, almost, because there was so much meat in there. But I, we, we've got a bunch of questions already, but, so I guess as we go through, also if there are, if there are thoughts about how to, how to move forward so that we've really got a chance to dig into and digest and take the time that's, that's needed to make updates, that would be helpful, too. Do you want to start with the questions from the audience? So Justin, on the residential draft schedule, and I think I've got residential in front of me here in the old schedule. Evelyn's question about building footprint per unit and then number of units maximum. This was similar to what Ian brought up about facade width per unit maximum and number of units maximum. Can you talk a little bit about how on an R4 parcel this would play out in real life or an R3?
Sure. So R4, really, you know, I don't think it'd be realistic for, for any, really, the R4 zoning districts, those sites are all kind of focused downtown. So I don't think you'd ever see really, you know, something outside of that downtown area be rezoned R4, just, just for clarity purposes. The per unit maximum, you know, is just related, related to specifically, you know, R4 is adjacent to downtown, that's where you do have some of the height already, that's where you, you know, would see some of the height.
Maybe you could start by clarifying for me just what building footprint per unit maximum actually means. Is that a floor plate?
It's, it, it really just means, you know, per, I, per unit, would, that would be the maximum that you could build. So if there's 10 units in a building.
Biggest one could be 1,200.
Oh, excuse me, that's for single family attached. I apologize.
For single family attached. Yep, yep, sorry.
Right. So if you were to, if you were to build.
Building footprint per unit maximum.
You know, townhomes in an R4 district, you know, the maximum that though, the building footprint could only be 1,200 square feet maximum.
Per floor plate.
Per floor plate. So whether you spread that, you know, 1,200 square feet through, you know, a first floor and a second floor, you know, a more of a flat concept, or not more of a flat concept, but through, you know, with stairs, whether it be two, two floors, three floors, 1,200 square feet would be the max that you would get.
Why would we want to do that?
For, for the whole, sorry, through the church, for the whole unit, not per the plate?
For the whole unit, right. For the whole unit.
Why would we want to max out our unit square footage?
Um, probably just to, I guess we don't have to, but the, the thought was to prevent.
Like, what's wrong with a 2,500 square foot penthouse unit?
We, we were just kind of thinking if, if we were trying to limit some of the wider units, that's where some of the wide.
Okay.
Wider buildings come into play is if you try and build, you know, something that's 3,000 square feet, you may end up with, you know, something wider.
Thank you. Until Evelyn's question, I, because that's a new.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Conversation, well, Ian's question, Evelyn's question. So building footprint per unit maximum, how would that or would that not interact with number of units maximum? So you could have a maximum in an R3, six units at a maximum of 1,000 square feet.
Yep.
And the facade width, now, now it says per unit, but I think you mean per building, is 50? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's really factoring more of a vertical unit rather than some of the wider ones that we've, I think, seen more recently.
And you need to see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I also should clarify, we're not expecting, you know, I don't think anybody thinks that we're going to get all the answers tonight. Just wanted to.
Absolutely.
Give you a, a brain dump, really, of, of everything that we've been looking at.
But you had some mockups and things. I think that's one that we're going to need to see. That's a new concept.
Oh, yeah. That makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll get more on that, Evelyn? We'll get more on that, and we'll get sort of what pictures might look like. And there's going to see, talked about, talked about highlighting what's changing, and that was actually notes and circles I was making on my, on my list, too. So I think whether that is, I understand why you didn't do it tonight because this is just initial.
Right.
Conversation, you know, but as we get closer to, after you get direction tonight, and, you know, okay, I think I've got a firmer sense of a max facade width of 100, you know, then it, it'll be helpful to see, you know, it used to be 150 with a waiver, now it's 100.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
We, and we, we do that normally for, for any.
For zoning changes.
Yeah, any zoning changes, so, absolutely.
And then, where would the presentation go on the city's website? Where will we be able to find that?
Um, I was just going to put it, attach it to the agenda of tonight's meeting.
Okay.
We had to clear, or wanted to finalize a few things before we uploaded it, but.
Thank you. And then, I've got general comments about density, parking, and I'm sure we're going to talk about those up here, but I just wanted to see if we had any more specifics.
Madam Chair, but before you go too far, can I back up to the point about where on the website that gets posted? Can we couple that with maybe a Facebook link announcement for that Kara can put out there, pointing people to that direction? Because I think the, the issue that David brought up about public engagement is really important. I, we do always meet the legal requirements of notification, but I, again, I'm, I sound like a broken record, I think, but the, above and beyond what we can do. And, and just to emphasize, this is for feedback. This is not, you know, something to, to, you know, raise the mob about or anything because then we come out early to, to, you know, get that level of buy-in. So let's, if we can have social media point to it, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Also a compilation of a lot of feedback and things that have happened already over the last two years, right?
It is.
So as conversations have, have happened up here, Justin and Aaron have been keeping notes and they've tried to feed them anywhere. I think those were, yes. Come on up to the mic if you would, please. Thank you.
It's because we are being recorded and it's part of the minutes.
Yes. Thanks, Al.
I would just like to ask, rather than have it embedded in minutes that most people won't think to look for.
In, in the agenda, I think you were going to put it on.
Agenda, yeah. So, I don't know if you, did you see the agenda before tonight?
Today's agenda, no.
No.
Okay.
So, I mean, most people aren't going to look, I mean, if you wanted to go on the city's website and look at things that are going to be, that are under consideration from the planning commission or whatever commission or department, there should be a place you can go and pull that up and not have to go through different minutes or different, you know, I mean, people won't know where to look. It should be simple and easy for people to find. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Yeah, right now on the, on the homepage, if you scroll down to the bottom, that's where all of the agendas are and all of the information. So all of the, the site plans from earlier, everything is always live linked right on the agendas, whether it's a council meeting, a planning commission meeting, a brownfield board meeting, rather than buried in minutes or something someone would need to find. So I think that's probably the most direct place, and you can typically get to current agendas through the homepage.
And really, too, we, you know, I think the intent was also to put this on the development projects page where we've been putting all of the, you know, bigger conversations. So I think that's probably, you know, a great call to put that something there. That's directly on the, linked on the homepage of the website, too.
Great, thank you. Sounds good. All right, I just have this giant list of random comments. Justin, what is the easiest way, I'm sorry, do you've got, you've got one more, Evelyn? Because we need to.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Do questions, comments from.
I was, I was just going to ask, is, is there somewhere I can find where the current ordinance are?
Yep.
As, as opposed to, so I can figure out myself what's changing and what.
Yeah, I'll let Justin answer that.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. I usually just Google city of Ferndale zoning ordinance and it takes me right there. Just, I literally, I did it tonight, literally, but.
Sure.
Yeah, but you can see where it is on the site.
Yeah, it's on the, I mean, it is a little bit buried, certainly. There's a lot of, I would say, when the new website was designed, there was a lot of fights about what's going to be on the front page. But on the planning and zoning page in the city's website, there's a link to, it's called Municode, is the, is the website that houses the entire ordinance. And I can show you that as well, or send you, you know, screenshots, you know, whatever, whatever it takes, but it's pretty, it's pretty, it's been updated recently, so there's actually a good search term. So if you, you know, usually what I do, like if I'm looking for parking requirements, I just search off-street parking. Pulls up the entire ordinance, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's usually the way that I make sure I get the most current one is I just Google and go, I mean, most, I don't know if it's most, but many cities around the country use that same website.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Okay. So, Justin, giant random list of comments. How would you like these to be?
Um.
Or I feel like we all have a giant random list of comments.
Yeah, I think it, you know, I think if we can start with the questions, the initial questions, then I, you know.
Okay, great.
I think we can start there and then I, you know, miscellaneous list, we can dive into those. But again, I, we wanted to give you as much information as possible because we haven't really had a good.
Most awesome.
Thorough discussion about, you know, all of this to start, but.
Yeah, I'm excited to go back through it. And, yeah, thank you, guys. It's a ton. I know you've been working on that for a while. All right, so we'll start with key questions, and then we'll come back and we'll do some cleanup. And I guess I'll just kind of go back and forth up and down the table. We'll talk about what's the appropriate regulation for maximum building width. Do we've got any maximum building width comments, either general or specific?
Like you, I, there's a lot of information to process, so I don't know that I have any specific answers tonight. No, I don't have an answer.
Michael? I'm building up.
Um, I think a, a lot of us have been struggling internally about the, the maximum building lengths being so long and, and trying to break up those facades. So I, I like the thought in, in this presentation that as you move through the less and less dense residential districts, the, the multifamily dwellings or the frontages are, are shrunk down. So I think that's, that's a smart move. I don't know if 100 feet is short enough for, for the R3 district, but again, I think that's something I, I'd like to really think, think on, for sure.
One of my questions when it came to facade length in MX in particular, and thinking about whether we should encourage or require a mix of uses as opposed to single uses happening in new construction in MX, that perhaps a way to incent either, either disincent a big, long residential developments or incent a mix might be, and I hate making a lot of footnotes, but your primary facade width max might decrease perhaps if it's only residential, right? Because I don't want someone to go, oh, my residential facade maximum in R3 is 100, but if I find something in MX, it's 150, and I can just build a giant residential in MX, which is basically what just happened. So if we want to encourage that mix of uses, how do we make sure to, to balance? If you are only going to do residential, you've got less space, or it has to match the residential requirements or something like that. But in general, I agree with Ian and with Michael about we keep trying to break up long frontages, and I think that's just a message that our frontages are too long. Krista?
I, I agree with what's said. I'm still, still, I, this graphic is very useful. I think I'd like to see what the real scale is, like, you know, even looking at a front door on something like this gives you an idea of the scale. So I think that would help me understand what would be the best length. I like that you pointed out that it's, it's not just the drive-by, it's not just the initial glance, but pedestrians feel better when there's a break in something, or they might have another path to take. So I'm taking that to heart, too. It's not, it's not just the facade or how the facade is detailed, it's the actual real breaks that can help support it.
Yeah, I think all these comments have been pretty spot-on, as well as Mr. Williamson's comments earlier, generally a little bit shorter rather than longer, reduce rather than increase. But then kind of also thinking about then how these are broken up. I think today with the, the site plan that was far improved from before, there are some much more significant and drastic changes that would break up a facade as opposed to a pretty continuous, flat space. And the height matters, how, how, how deep some of those things, even if, though it's still a connected building, how deep some of those changes are, that matters, in kind of those open spaces along the way. So I think I'd kind of echo some of those comments, but some of my thought kind of ties into your question later about projects that have been built lately and which were designed better. I think that kind of gets into that same discussion about materials, you know, and how that interplays with the length of the building, how you kind of fit in the step backs and setbacks. And I really like the idea of open space being part of that, whether it's public open space or private open space, I'm not sure. We want to say it has to be a private open space. I think you can kind of, then kind of build in these unique spaces within the, the form. So that might allow for some of that creativity, whereas if this open space requirement is built into it, that would force a breaking up of the facade as well. So I think that could be a creative way to get towards that, where, you know, you, you might struggle when you're talking about a square footage per unit and how that might interplay with a facade, saying you need X number or a percentage of open space would force that to be built into it instead of just a monolithic wall, essentially. So I think, I think a lot of those things are moving in the right direction. It's kind of modeling out what those actually would look like in real life will lend clarity.
Thank you. Yep.
No, I concur with what's been said. I think we, I agree that we've struggled, I think, with the whole width issue, and, yeah, I, I agree with what I'm hearing at the table, so.
Thank you. Anything you want us to clarify?
No, I think massing would help.
Yep.
It sounds like across the board, which is kind of the next step. We have, we have some that, but it just, they weren't enough, done enough to really show, so.
Well, and we had some comments from the audience about, about density, that kind of ties to this conversation, but also about parking requirements, leaving more. Leaving more open space on the, on the sites, allowing different types of materials for parking areas could also kind of fit into this frontage conversation. Not that I, I don't, I don't want parking at the frontage, that's not my suggestion, but. I'm gonna, I'm adding something to your key questions. I'm gonna add something about parking to your key questions, because I don't. Next one. Dan, you wanna start this one? Are there examples of missing metal housing in Ferndale that you'd like to see more of? So something that is not a single-family home, which is what the vast majority of our city is and what we're not really talking about making changes to, but some of those other areas.
Yeah, I, I go back to, instead of dictating exactly what kind of housing stock, I think it's more about the quality of the housing stock, the aging in place issue and affordable housing. I'm not particular about which model that falls into. I'm more interested in the aim and the goal of where we arrive and how we get there. So, those are my comments.
Thank you.
But I'm always gonna defer back to affordable and aged in place.
Aren't you glad you entered those topics?
Yeah.
Thank you. Brent?
I think it sounds like a good homework assignment. Maybe kind of keep an eye around the neighborhood, see what seems to be working. I think that's a great point though, what you've made there. Yeah, and then also thinking through, could that be built today?
Right.
I think that's just kind of that process we need to look at, so.
So more, more examples of kind of what we showed at the end?
Yeah, I think that's great, especially real-life situations within Ferndale.
I would edit my comments just to include no more crate houses or whatever we're calling those things.
Shipping containers?
Container houses.
They're permitted. What's wrong with shipping taters?
Maybe I need a two-word one.
There's some cool ones in Detroit, actually.
End up looking like shipping.
Okay.
That's what I'm holding back from saying, yeah, I, I, yeah.
Uh, sorry to get back to missing metal housing, you know, perhaps that you see around Ferndale that you'd like to see more of, Krista? Any examples that, for homework assignment, I think, like to go out with that eye. Justin hears me talk about these two things all the time, because they're two of my favorite spaces in the whole city. And one of them is on Marshall near Allen, and you, actually, you and Doug might have been on the planning commission when this one happened, or it might have been before you. The townhomes that go deep into the lot, so really it's maybe a fifty-foot lot, right? So it doesn't feel any larger. This is approximately the southwest corner of Marshall, but it's, it's two parcels to the west from the corner. And you don't know where it is because you can't see it. And that's the really interesting thing. Not only is it beautiful materials, it's brick, it gets back to the could it be built today question, but it was built in the nineties. You know, this is something that was built a hundred years ago. So I'd encourage you guys to drive down Marshall toward Allen and take a look at the, the townhomes that sort of, you know, they, they cut south and, you know, it's approximately the southwest corner, but in a little bit, yeah, you're in Marshall. So I love that, I love that development and the way that it fits in and the way that it, it only has one driveway, same size as the single-family homes, but it really adds a lot of density and a lot of character. And then, uh, one of my favorite, favorite couple blocks in the city, not far from where I grew up, is West Breckenridge between Livernoy and Woodward. It is a, I think it's our most diverse couple blocks of housing stock in the city. And there are some other great examples of small apartment buildings in different places, particularly on the, on the east side. But this really feels like R1 scale and it feels to me like what R2 should be. Like, how do you fit in a duplex in a four-square on the same-sized lot as your next-door neighbor? And it doesn't kind of create a ton of extra driveways or.
I have a comment that kind of dovetails from that, which is, I, why are we only allowing triplexes as opposed to quadplexes?
Four squares.
That was open to conversation. I'm, I'm interested. I mean, we've talked a little bit about fourplexes, I think, with the TAP site and stuff like that.
I believe that the FHA clarifies multifamily housing as five units or more. So I, I feel like we should be using that same sort of logic. And there are a lot of other things I, I think that go into that as well. So I, I just think it's something worth exploring and, you know, one more unit to me is not changing the character drastically. You know, if you have two, you know, two, two units on the ground floor and two units above, to me that, that makes sense.
Any favorite?
Uh, I would, I, again, I would echo the comments about affordable housing. I think that's important. And as you said, I think that's a very interesting area on West Breckenridge and, and does feel like that's the kind of neighborhood that maybe an R2, R3 should be, so.
No specific examples, but I guess I had a question when this particular question, when this one came up. Maybe it's a passing trend, but the tiny home. How do you account for that? I think of, I think of up north where you've got a plot of land, but you've got smaller cottages on one road that, you know, maybe I'll share the water view. But it, how do you, if, if that's something that someone came to Ferndale with, how do we, how would that be addressed? And maybe, maybe we don't address it, maybe we wait for it, but I kind of, the other way of, it's, it's small, it's affordable, it's, it could be compact, you could, you may be able to place a few of them on an existing lot, and what does that look like?
And they wouldn't necessarily need to be multi-story. I think that that's my struggle with townhomes right now. And, you know, in our conversation with Mike even a couple weeks ago, like, how, if you're going to build something that is multi-story, how do you try to make it flexible to answer some of the aging in place issues or even just general accessibility questions?
The other that I was thinking of, and we may have addressed this and I may have missed it, but at one point we discussed primary residence and like granny flats. Or, or building over existing garages and how that, you know, if you have an alley and how, how is that addressed? So I guess that was the other piece of maybe existing homes, would we, if someone wanted to do that, addressing that as well?
Yeah.
Attached or not attached?
Yeah, I mean, right now, they can, they, they're special land uses in, I think, all the residential districts. But I would say, I think, I, I was talking with the building official, and I don't think I've seen really any since I've been at the city. Whether that's just because they're not promoted or, you know, or, I mean, I think.
Going into my neighborhood.
Yeah. I think a couple people have told me that our, you know, height allowance is too restrictive for that, but in talking with some of the commission, I don't think that that's really valid. That's just someone trying to, to build higher and taller, which is not necessarily what we want, so.
The only one that I know of is apparently moving forward, we permitted it a while ago and it, it might be a container home, is at the corner of Nine and Dover. Is the only one that I know of that had a granny flat integrated. And it sounds like it might actually happen.
Yeah.
That's the only one I remember, though, in twelve years.
I mean, I think, you know, it's something that we haven't really promoted, but I think it, you know, could help with some of the affordability issues really in the city, you know, along with someone having a second income or, you know, take care of a family member that, you know, maybe some other suburb where they can't drive and, and stuck away from family, so.
And both of those have parking questions, so I'll leave it at that.
How about you kick us off with, should sites be limited to one driveway per frontage without a waiver, Doug?
May I ask a clarification question? What do we consider circle drives? I only know a couple of them in town, but is that because there's two cuts into the property? Is that one or two?
Yeah, when it's, I think your intent with one driveway per frontage was one curb cut, right?
Right. And it was really more focused.
Technically, that's a no.
All right. It was really more focused, I should have clarified, it was more focused with, focused on mixed-use districts, but, you know, I think probably for some of the R3 and R4 situations, we probably wouldn't want multiple driveways either.
I think unless the, the traffic patterns dictate a necessity.
Right.
I think we should keep it to one as much as possible.
Yeah.
I don't mind one, you know, limiting that, you know, keeping it down. I guess I would wanna see, if there's an example or if there's some specific reason, I think we, we had a proposal in front of us a couple, couple meetings ago that did have multiple units on one site with one driveway in and out. And, you know, unless it's really narrow, there's some reason that you can't fit, you know, that you need more than one drive for site reasons, if it's a one-way. I don't, yeah, I don't, not bothered by having just one cut.
I'm assuming access to an alley wouldn't count in this situation. So you get your one, you know, driveway, but then if I have back access to an alley to get out, that's just.
Yeah, it's really, yeah.
You'd get zero because you had access to an alley.
So, yeah, I mean, the intent with.
That's some of the stuff we've been talking about.
The intent right now is to limit, limit people to only alleys, but.
In the few places where they exist.
Right, right.
Michael, um, per cuts?
I think, I'm sorry, when we're at a tutorial on that, I think we should. I think we should, I'm just saying, I think we should keep that in mind, because every so often, and it seems with, it comes and goes in frequency, but we get requests to vacate an alley. And we should really think about that then in light of this regulation when we consider it. And I, I put that right in front of council.
Yeah. And so, and, and staff's been operating under the master plan recommendation to not vacate alleys, other than, there's been some where, for whatever reason, it's already been like treated, vacated, but not officially. So we've kind of brought those to council, but yeah. But also it does bring up to the conversation more of, from a maintenance perspective. You know, I know there's a lot of alleys that are in use, but not necessarily maintained by DBW now because of cost and, and history and things like that.
Well, some of them are just dirt gravel roads.
Right, right.
That was my question, too, was, are we talking about paved alleys?
Right. And so, I mean, I think that could probably be a strategic plan conversation too, with a focus on alleys.
I just, if you do bring any more to council, I would literally say in the packet, our goal is to reduce the number of, you know, and keep that in mind for future development of those sites.
Yeah.
Because we, we can be done, so you gotta hit us over the head sometimes with it. Well, I've just been honest.
Not, not in my experience. Yes.
Go, go, go.
No, that's it, that's my comment. Yes, sites should be limited.
That's my comment as well, yes. My gut says yes. One without a waiver. Krista or Brent? The site plan we saw last time, alley access on two, curb cuts, you know, we could have, in the, under this, rethought that access.
Right, yeah, that would all be from the alley unless they presented a case otherwise.
Yeah. Okay, uh, let us move to, should parking requirements for housing be based on bedrooms instead of units?
And admittedly, there's more homework to provide on that. I know, I think ULI has done a recent white paper or something on, you know, that type of subject. And so more, we can provide more information on that certainly. But it just came up because we had been talking about a lot of the smaller unit sizes that have been proposed lately and, you know.
I'm a pretty, unless you bring something here that changes my mind, I'm a pretty solid no on this. Only because as I look across, you know, I use myself as an example, even if I was in a multi-unit complex, I've got four bedrooms, two of which are actually livable and the other two are, you know, an office and whatever. So I, I don't think the number of bedrooms necessarily dictates the number of drivers, especially when you consider kids and, and all the other uses for quote-unquote bedrooms. I just don't think that's, I think it's such a variable standard for how really housing is used, that it makes me a little uncomfortable.
Yeah, I think it kind of changes when you're going from a single-family into a multifamily and some of the larger, you know, multifamily buildings and how many units are in there. But it is kind of, you know, when we're talking about bedrooms versus units versus square feet, you know, it's, uh, there's something in there that it does make sense to kind of have a little lower requirement in some cases, but in other cases, like you're saying, it really doesn't.
At the bedroom that I hide all my stuff so no one knows I'm a slob is, that doesn't need a drop parking spot, you know?
You're also in an R1.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, but I'm just using it as an example. My behavior would be the same wherever I lived.
A four-bedroom in a, on a multifamily unit is a little bit pure and par between.
I know. Just for example.
Krista, thoughts on bedrooms versus units?
Just way out there. I, I think units versus bedrooms, but also build for the world you want. And, you know, I think the trend may be toward less owned cars and more sharing and, and that could be down the road, but maybe just take a look at it that way.
I don't know. This one's just like a big question mark for me. I'm, I'm not sure. I don't know enough about the pros and cons of each one, so I will just pass.
I, I guess I will be the contrarian a bit. I, I think that the, the bed count actually might be a little more progressive than what we have right now. And seeing how many, you know, waivers people are asking for and, and parking agreements and things of that nature, it just seems like maybe that's the direction we're heading anyway. So I, I agree with the sentiment that we should build for the world that we wanna live in. And to me, for multifamily, I will say again, so I, I think that's a, a good point, is that maybe this is a standard that's only for these multifamily developments and not for more of the single-family or, or detached units or attached single-family units or something like that. But, yeah, I think that the room count, to me, makes some sense.
I'm, I'm torn. I've been a college student in a situation where I've had to share a bedroom, you know, or share rooms with other people. So counting a, a room wouldn't necessarily accommodate all the people we had and all the cars that we needed to, to park. So I agree about, you know, like I said, building, building for what you hope to attain. But, yeah, more homework on that one.
The, the other point I would add is, and I don't know the answer to this, but parking's expensive. So if we do it by bedroom, are we providing economic pressure to build smaller units, which would mean more units on a site, versus two, three-bedroom units?
Good.
Good question.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if we're really thinking about it as like a one-to-one ratio. I think there's some kind of room for how that works in there, you know, within a range could work as well.
And I wanna make sure we come back and talk about parking.
Yeah.
On to.
I mean, I think I, I go the sentiment that less parking in general, even though it's a little bit scary, is the, the trajectory. Although, you know, the fewer on the, on the, on the minute, I mean, the, the requirement side.
The requirement right now is 1.5 per, per unit?
In residential, like R3 and R4. But in down, in commercial districts, so mixed-use and downtown and C2, those, that's one per unit.
Per upper story, residential?
For upper story, yes.
Per unit, not per bedroom?
Correct.
So in, in MX, we would be potentially increasing a parking requirement if we went to the per bedroom rather than unit.
And so we could continue to just stick with. All right, we, we can show a couple of different options, I think.
Including the square footage option, just for comparison.
Anything else on parking requirements based on bedroom status units? I know, I'll definitely, we'll definitely come back to parking more generally. Parking question about how do we compensate for lack of off-street parking on non-conforming sites, but encourage permitted uses? This is the West Marshall and North Hilton question?
Yeah, Livernoy.
Yeah, the, yeah, good point. Yeah, to some extent, on, on some of those parcels on Livernoy. Doug, thoughts?
I mean, that, that could be its own meaning in itself, probably, but.
Yeah.
It's gonna be its own capital plan in itself.
Yeah.
All right, no comments. I have no idea how to approach this one.
Whenever this comes up, I say it requires massive public investment, because the, you know, rewind back twenty-five years now, oh my goodness, twenty years, twenty-five years. Massive public investment catalyzed downtown development. And I think in a couple of these smaller places, the private sector just isn't going to be able to, to lead when it comes to the type of, I, I don't know, you know, Marshall and La Prairie was a walkable neighborhood store. Do we just have to eventually wait until someone has put another walkable neighborhood? a walkable neighborhood store, do we just have to eventually wait until someone wants to put another walkable neighborhood store in?
And I, I love the fact to think about.
And in lieu of that, I think the public sector has to leave, but, this is.
Yeah, and I think, I, I love the fact to think about that, that, you know, back when these things were designed and built, we had twenty thousand more residents in the city than we do today.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, yeah, I, I, it, it, it makes me wonder.
Krista?
No.
Like the off-street parking, I know, it's huge.
No, your, um, your comment about it being a, a public input to make something changes, I'll type in.
Yeah, I strongly support that. I think, um, I know it's not necessarily, um, the most popular position, but, um, you know, a, a, a street where parking is allowed, where a car isn't parked is costing, it's, that's a public cost. Um, that is a space that has been built, it's a space that's maintained, it's a space that's taken from other uses. Um, so I do think that where parking is allowed, if, um, you know, parking can happen there. Um, so where there aren't cross streets that can take some overflow from some of the more mixed-use or commercial-type locations, I think it makes a lot of sense to kind of go more in the public or municipal um, type direction. I think that if we don't go that way, um, the, the built form, the urban form ends up being very chopped up, it's not continuous and it's not really accomplishing most of the other goals that have been set forth for the city, so I think that it, as you said, um, it will require public investment, but I also think, um, uh, you know, it's, there's a lot of places where cars could be parked that they're not parked.
All right, um, haha, I'm, I'm kind of excited for this one.
Can I say really quick, actually?
Yeah, please.
On that, I know, um, Marshall, um, yeah, as a fire route, um, a lane for emergency traffic, I know it's, it's a big push there to make sure it's wide enough that a vehicle can get through and get through quickly, um. I really don't want to be slowing down response times, I don't think that's something that, um, we want to be getting into, but I do want to have a realistic assessment of what really truly is needed and how that is impacted if there is parking on both sides of the road there, and how does that ease some of these other considerations that we're talking about? Um, and, and the idea of, you know, I, I drive down that road often, um, to bring my daughter to school, and there's, there can be a police car sitting there waiting for people to be speeding down the road. This is a road that was designed to go fast. This is a road designed to go very fast, and I think, um, it can't be just shortening response times, but it's also preventing those incidents from happening. That's a dangerous road, so you're actually gonna have to have more responses in, in situations where we are going faster, whether it's Pinecrest, Marshall, um, some of these routes, so if people are slowed down, sure, it might take a few seconds longer to get somewhere, but there might be that many fewer incidents that are requiring um, the responses, so I think that needs to be part of the discussion, not just the, the speed of response.
And you're thinking about Marshall, uh, really like from Allen to Woodward?
Yeah, this is about where it's one side.
MX, yeah.
But that, that kind of concept throughout the city as well, um, what is really driving the design standards? Um, and where is there some leeway there?
Yeah, that, that's exactly, I mean, you hit it right on the head, I mean, we really can't just continue to put up signs and expect people to slow down, we have to redesign a lot of these streets, um, and so, appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, I don't know how applicable it is, I know Grand Rapids has the Vital Streets program where they really are slowing down on many streets, um, actually making it more difficult to go fast. So, um, if they've had any, um, lessons learned as far as public safety and some of those response times, I think that would be a great place to look.
That's not a planning commission space, thank you, um. All right, we already move on to things that we wish were designed better. Um, and guidelines that would have minimized bad design. I made a note here that said slide eighteen. Um, and now I don't remember what was on slide eighteen, but for some reason I thought it corresponded with this bullet. There, that, all right, slide eighteen, um. What guidelines would have minimized bad design? Do we want a design handbook? What projects have been built lately that you wish were designed better? Dan? I can come back to you, I can make Dan start.
I'd be happy to.
He's texting, damn.
I'm not texting, I'm taking notes.
I apologize.
You're fine, I don't care. Um, so I almost think this is the wrong question, because I think it's, the point is critical, but I think we need to have a conversation about three steps back and be very clear about the role of the planning commission in critiquing design and appearance. I think sometimes we're unclear about that, and then we go over the line of what we're really supposed to be doing here, or maybe that's just me about how I feel. I, I think at times we could benefit from more clarity about what the rule of government in this is, um, and what, what we're here to do and what we're not here to do. And then I think the next question is, all right, so then, with what we're here to do, how do we mitigate bad design choices? So I almost think there's a question to debate before this.
I, maybe there's a question for conversation, but I don't think it's for debate, I think the planning commission absolutely regulates design. Um, and we just have to decide how broad we want to make those, that permissive.
Yeah, it's part of the conversation, absolutely.
Yeah, do we, do we want to make, can you hold on one sec, please? Do we want to make, um, the, do we want to make our space to do that narrow or broad? But the planning commission absolutely regulates it.
Yeah, that's kind of a rule of government question for me, so I'd just like to have the conversation.
Okay, regarding the, the previous, uh, subject discussion, uh, you could also not be decreasing the, the density downtown and throughout the city, uh, like at Ferndale House, creating more density. Cars trying to figure out, how can they get past, um, since Livernoy is, is on a road diet, how can they get past, um, or get to eight miles, six ninety-six quicker by cutting through residential areas? Increasing the density increases the traffic, so don't increase the density. We can maintain a livable city, and people won't, like Hammond around our block, won't be moving to Rochester Hills, which is the most quieter place, or looking for a nice place way out in the suburbs, in the middle of a square mile where you don't have people cutting through you, which we do have. So don't increase the density, and you know, don't increase the traffic problem.
Okay, we can't have a sort of a constant back and forth, but thank you.
Okay, well, responding to the last convers- subject matter.
Thank you. All right, so we were talking about design, was there anything else you had?
No.
Dan, thank you.
I'm, I'm always hesitant to get too, uh, did you want to go ahead?
Nope, I'm just taking notes.
I'm always hesitant to get a little, like, too prescriptive when it comes to the design. Um, I'm definitely encouraged maybe a few, a, a bit more clarity on what the default parameters are, just to, you know, there's things we keep bumping up against where people are, some of the proposals are pushing the limits on whether it's a facade length or, um, kind of lack of any sort of differentiation that really does become a detriment to the community, um, so I think just being a little bit more clear what those very essential parameters are, um, and kind of letting some creativity take its place there, I think, um, some of the things I've been opening, I mean, I've been discussing is the open space, whether that's on the ground floor or if it's elevated, it can be, you know, some creativity there, but I think that that does allow for the breaking up of a, a building, and we'll often address some of the concerns we have, but that's just one of the topics um, that could kind of get into that. So like I said, not, not too prescriptive, but maybe a little bit clearer with their default parameters.
Thank you. Krista?
Um, I agree, it'd be, it'd be nice to know what the parameters are, I, I actually favor a, a mix of all kinds of architecture, you might not think they go together, but they help build character, but as soon as you get too many of one kind, so if it's modern and then that's what, that's what you're seeing infilled with or torn down and replaced with, then it, if it's too much of any one kind, it could sway the character, um. I don't know if that answers, like, the, the big facades, like, how much detail should we, um, ask for? But I think every one of these things, you know, answers even the street wall, like, what is, what is that one um, surface and the impact on somebody living in the area or, or, um, passing through the area, so. Um, not much of an answer, I think, guidelines, but I, I think if this is the only place that reviews something like that, then you know, we should take on that role and, but, but smartly, um, and, and allow for creativity, like, um, I may have complained, um, I, I know that we've been asked to design things on the fly as a group, right, sitting here, not in little groups, and I, I don't think that's appropriate, I think, um, if we're objectively looking at what's proposed to us along with the review that we get from the city and staff, that we've already gone a long way. So, somewhere in between, where we, we know what we're looking for, but we're not doing a, hey, we'll help you design it while we're up here, then, so.
I definitely agree with that. Designing at the table is, is problematic for us, for applicants, uh, for Justin. One of my first, uh, volunteer engagements when I came back to Ferndale, um, after college, uh, was with the DDA, and I wasn't ever on the design committee, um, but that is, that, that, I don't know why I'm so comfortable with having a lot of, sort of, this is what this should look like, you know, right now we've got some very broad categories about, you know, compatibility with neighboring uses and, and other things, um, I think I would like to see, and again, it's, it's almost because we have so many of these conversations at the table, where we're kind of trying to massage around the edges, um, some of these sorts of things addressed more specifically upfront, I think would give better direction to architects and developers, um, and I think we would get more of what we want the first time, rather than just some of the very broad compatibility statements that we have now. Particularly for Red Special. You know, DDA aside, that's a whole special beast. Yeah.
Well, I, I certainly don't believe that we should be limiting the style of architecture that, uh, developers and, and, uh, architects are coming into um, these meetings presenting to us, um, I think we should obviously be promoting good design, but not necessarily of, of any particular style, so the eclecticism of this city and many cities is what makes them desirable places to live. So, I, I would continue to advocate for um, pushing towards, again, good design, but no, you know, not traditional, not contemporary, modern, anything, uh, in particular. So, I do think that, yes, we do have a role in uh, creating human-scale development in, in the city, or promoting that. Um, I think that there are a, a variety of ways that applicants can, can do that. I apologize. Uh, I think there are a variety of, of ways that people can do that, so, um, I think we do need to have something codified to, to give us some, some teeth to say, you know, that you, you can't just have a hundred and fifty-foot sheer wall of brick, because that is a scary thing for a pedestrian to walk by, I mean, it's, uh, it's, it's bland and it, it's doesn't create a, a beautiful city, so. I, I, I don't know what those design guidelines look like, um, but I, I do think we need to enforce things like articulating facades and, and changing roof configurations and things like that to be pedestrian-oriented. Makes sense?
We have a, a line somewhere about, um, being conducive to the character of the adjacent neighborhood, something like that, which is fine when your neighborhood has character. I'm gonna pick on my neck of the woods, which, um, we've had a lot of, uh, designs that were particularly aesthetically questionable, because the materials in my area are concrete masonry units and metal and vinyl siding, and so I don't, I have trouble with that particular line because I don't want to limit, so, I don't want someone to come in with just an all-metal building, I, I think that you can use brick, you know, there is a, a home, uh, that was built in the last ten years down my block that, that did use brick, and it, it does look odd on the block, and yet it's, it's aesthetically pleasing, so there's gotta be a middle ground, there's gotta be a way to, to encourage design and encourage um, more creative uses of materials without saying that it has to be, um, a metal box, yeah.
I should have also added, um, we've had conversations recently about things that weren't addressing the street, um, and how to make that just, like, totally clear, um, and when you might have something existing non-conforming that needs to be accounted for, so the, the thing, in my neighborhood that I walk past all the time that I think of is where a long white beard is, you know, so that would be, that's a very car-oriented design, it's a long skinny building, you know, with a, a bunch of now doors, is one business, several now, um, fronting a parking lot. I don't know that we would want to build that again, saying that we just built it two weeks ago, or last week, you know, like, so that's, that's kind of the challenge, is, is that Brent is completely right when he says that the medical marijuana facility on Hilton is a very car-oriented design, but it also relatively, save for the giant parking weaver, Matt or seniors, right, it was, the parking wasn't in front of the building, it wasn't, it, they had the same number of curb cuts they'd had before and technically that's allowed, so I, I think some of those car-oriented design things have been brought up and, and will be addressed when it comes to curb cuts, um, and parking, but the, I've just been thinking about it a lot since we did that, um, that site plan on, on Hilton, um, about car-oriented, and how car-oriented does this community want to be? You gotta address the street, you gotta, you know, residential in particular, right? Damn it, we just did one, but it, but the ordinance, sorry, I'll stop. Uh, question about, um, and I think, um, actually a number of people have touched on this already, so there might not be a ton to add about city balancing different types of architecture and building character, things that are newer and things that are older. Deb, if you want to start, because I talked about this a little bit.
Variety is good.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I just, I don't think we should be enforcing any particular style on the city and create this faux Disneyland sort of aesthetic in Ferndale.
Mm-hmm.
I'm in general in favor of building reuse, I'm someone who is very interested in and supportive of adaptive reuse. Uh, that said, I also don't think Ferndale needs to be preserved in amber in any way, and, you know, I think we've demonstrated that with things like um, the transit-oriented, you know, spaces that we've been trying to build closer to the downtown, so. A little bit of both, you know, how do you reuse what you have and balance it with what's of its time?
I feel the same, variety, it's character.
Nothing additional?
Dan?
No, one thing.
Um, I want to make sure we talk, um, about parking, we've touched on it a few times, um, we have, I mean, we, we must have one of the most progressive transit-oriented parking ordinances already, um. We are more transit-oriented than there is transit in our community, and you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but every time we have the opportunity to make ourselves more transit-oriented, our community declines to do so, and I just don't know that Ferndale can become even more of a transit-oriented island without transit, so that, that's the only reason that I would hesitate, you know, on conversations about more shared parking, parking waivers, like, I, I just think we gotta get a lot more formal about if there's shared parking, does that run with the property, does it run with the project, what happens if you lose that shared parking, like, it, it just really is still an issue, and I hate that we have to plan for where we put our cars, but, um, we are, I, I think we are as far ahead of our region as we can reasonably. But we are, I, I think we are as far ahead of our region as we can reasonably get on parking.
I think that's an excellent point and it's very relevant because even best case scenario, we're way out there, the rest of the region, at best now, maybe 10 years away from reasonable mass transit. And that's optimistic. So what do we do in the meantime? You know, how do we operate?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would respond to that, that it's not just transit versus automobile. I think it's all modes of transportation. That can be automobile, it can be some sort of transit, but it also can be walking, biking, or any other sort of mode. So I think there's, you know, there's a lot of room for how that can be looked at. But it's also reduced total number of trips that were needed. I think when some of those spots aren't necessarily devoting each site to a building and then 60% of the parcels parking, you have an ability to have a closer proximity to a multitude of uses. And then you're actually reducing the number of required trips that have to be made. So I don't think it's just one thing when it comes to transit. I think some of those things kind of, kind of snowball and build off themselves. If you're looking at downtown Ferndale, it's a prime example of it. And, you know, it's, it's hard to get to that point. I think, I don't think you can just get rid of all the parking requirements and say, hey, this is going to be great on another location on Liverno, let's say. But when we're talking about strategic public investments and really kind of looking at the context, you know, one site, it might make a lot of sense where you can have a waiver to have a lot fewer parking spaces. Or another site, like we looked at on Hilton, there might not be much parking nearby. And so you don't actually have that as a backup. So I think the context is very important when we're looking at that and as far as that goes in our community. So, yeah, I guess, I started to go a little bit further past the discussion of the transit, but I think you have to look at it from that full perspective.
Mobility in general, yeah.
Yeah, all sorts of mobility.
Well, and if I was understanding correctly, the, you know, we had a comment about not increasing density and increasing density doesn't necessarily mean always increasing housing units. It can mean changing your mix and types of uses, which if I, if I understood, just to kind of paraphrase back to make sure I understood, can help change the way that people move around spaces. You know, you use your feet or your bikes more often than your cars if you're in closer proximity because you're in either a more transit oriented or a more dense space with a better mix of uses.
Right, if those, you have, you have the ability to actually put those uses there too.
Right, right.
Right, absolutely.
Makes me think about MX and like, let's not just build straight residential in MX.
Yeah, you're taking the words out of my mouth. I, I think, I'm sure there's a map that goes along with the storefront and stoop. Use, frontage types for the mixed use district. But, you know, any way we can promote more ground floor retail to get people, you know, right in the areas where they, they are buying goods and going to classes and doing things of that nature, you know, going to work. If those are closer to the places that people live, then they don't need to use their cars frequently. So less parking issues.
Any broader thoughts on parking, Krista?
Not right now.
Or Deb? Just wanted to make sure we came back around to that because we did a number of comments from the public and I know everything's kind of touched on that. So what's the next, what's the next step with this? You guys have put a ton of time and energy in and I think there's a lot more coming.
Okay. I think, you know, I think we need to look at how we want to approach it. Because I think initially we've been talking about all of these subjects separately. But they're all a bit connected. And, you know, I think some corridors are more pressing than others. So I think we need to come back to you with some more of the background information you requested, you know, more massing imagery to help, you know, show what these units would even look like on a realistic site. I think we need to also provide more, you know, research about the parking. And, you know, we are ahead, I think, of other cities in, in the region. But I think, you know, it may not be regional transit, but we've had, you know, some transit operators make, make some sizable improvements and we're really well positioned with those, which is helpful. And we do have probably the best bike network of any, anybody in the region. So I think, you know, trying to show more results related to that and how that has affected land use would probably be helpful in the conversation. And then how that ties.
I'm sorry, that would be helpful on a number of levels because we're so progressive. We're frequently ahead of the expectations and desires of our residents. At least once a week, I get a complaint about the bike lanes. He doesn't understand the long-term goal. So if, as we, we've got to find metrics to measure that, to show where the, where the success in that is, to tell our story better. Because it was absolutely the right thing to do, but it's difficult to communicate why.
Yeah, and I think we, you know, need to tie transportation more to sustainability. Aaron and I have been talking about that a lot lately and, and, you know, a lot of people don't picture those improvements together, but they are very much tied together and, you know, part of the mayor's and council's climate, you know, agreement that was.
Less parking, more permeability, more trees.
So I think really what we need to figure out is the next approach forward. I, you know, I think this is a lot to bring together all at once, so I'm wondering if we bring together pieces is better. I don't know, so.
What do you guys think? I kind of, I, I wouldn't have, I know that I wouldn't have caught some of the things that I caught if I hadn't been looking at R and MX together.
Yeah, and that's, and that's kind of how we started, just looking at MX and then we said, well, they're really tied.
Like the, all the thinking that I'm doing about residential and how do I make sure I don't accidentally insinate over where I don't want it? Like, if I hadn't seen MX and R, I wouldn't have caught it.
Yeah.
Is it possible through the chair, if we, and this may give April a stroke, but it would almost be worthwhile to review the next iteration of this with both council and the planning commission together. And I know we, we've got that strategic planning session in December, that may be a little soon. But if there's some way to at least queue up that conversation during that part, because I think this is critical for us to be in alignment on.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
To piggyback on that, it's always easier to discuss it when we don't have a full agenda ahead of it. So maybe it's, yeah, its own.
Yeah, this was the only thing at first, but.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, yeah.
It was a good day for it. Yep. So, yeah, I think it's got to be its own night, which is perfectly fine. I think initially I was thinking that mixed use was my, was the focus, just because it is so flexible. And I do think, it actually, it's, it's too, it's very flexible and it's also, I think, prevented some things that we want as well. So I think initially my focus was go forward with mixed use first, but I think they're just so tied together that I'm a little, I probably would say that we may not touch parking because I think once you start touching one portion of parking, you kind of have to dive into all of it. So I think that's, maybe it's his own, its own thing, but I think, you know, we can go back to the drawing board with all the three pages of notes that I have at least.
Can we touch on street parking? Or does that make way too big of a crazy, kind of the conversation about how are we going to catalyze the reuse of buildings in MX really does touch on street?
Yeah, let, let's.
And whether we can count it and.
Yeah, let us kind of evaluate. I mean, yeah, let us come back with something on that. I think that makes sense.
Okay. That's the one piece with MX that I, I think we really have to. Is the city going to pay for it? Can we count it in a site plan? All those sorts of questions.
Yeah, okay. And then I think, you know, all the feedback from planning commission and the residents and community that came tonight about communicating it better and, you know, this was pretty technical jargon, you know, filled. So, you know, so I think adding some pictures and, and, you know, getting another layer, having communications.
Sure, you had helped.
Good. But I think, you know, those, that feedback was loud and clear and, you know, probably explaining more of what missing middle is. We did a presentation last year, but, you know, I think probably taking some of those pieces and bringing it back would help explain it. And, because I think the goal is not to just max out every single site in the city. And, you know, I think that might get lost in some of the presentations that we have, so.
Yeah. So my sense is that this is not a before the first of the year conversation.
Probably. I don't, I don't know that that's realistic, but.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
Because I think that there's a lot of, and also just to clarify, Smith Group, oh my gosh, I always forget her name.
Kathleen.
Kathleen, thank you, from Hamilton Anderson, who was so involved in our master plan.
Oh.
Is now at Smith Group. So, you know, it's, there is continuity between, no?
No.
I thought, I thought Kathleen was working on this.
Kathleen, she was formerly of Safe Bill LSL.
Oh, sorry, I just said the wrong company.
But they've been very involved with the city for a number of years. And so, I mean, I think this is really a combination of, you know, those, that thinking and then also the master plan's thinking, so.
Yeah, it, Smith Group didn't just fall out of the sky, it's because it's for Kathleen's.
Right.
To my understanding.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Go through the chair, kudos to you and Aaron. So this is a complicated topic. And, yeah, the material's dense, but so is the, so is the topic. So I think you guys did a great job kicking off this discussion. And, yeah, pictures will help, but it, it, you know, this is, this is complicated. And so I'm glad we're queuing it up in this way for the discussion. And again, it's good that we bring council into.
Thank you.
If I could just add one more thing. Any, any, anything in here about incentivizing ground floor, ground floor retail and mixed use? I would be all for seeing something as to how we promote that even further.
Sounds good. I think we can take a look at what we reviewed with the central business district, but more refined and less intense.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
And our administrative items?
I was just going to say, maybe I just, for me, I'd maybe say just non-residential use, ground floor active use.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. That's fine. Which I think maybe what we ended up.
That's where we ended up, yeah.
District, sure, that's, that's fine. And I think definitely more appropriate even in the mixed, in the MXD than it is in central business district.
Sounds good.
Cool.
So strategic planning session, December ninth, has been mentioned by the councilman. It is a Sunday, it's a big all-day endeavor. The basis of city strategic planning comes directly out of the master land use plan, which is freaking sweet. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, congratulations to you all too, because the, I mean, the strategic plan consultant, the consultant said that they have, they typically just push the master plan aside when they put strategic plans together. And they said this is really a rare instance where they took.
How in the hell would you do that?
Took a lot of action items, I mean, most of them and goals from our master plan and put it in the council's strategic plan. So I think all the time we spent on it is worth it.
Is there anyone who wants to, you have heard of that, the night? I think there's space for up to two of us.
I'm, I'm interested, but I just don't know if I'm going to be able to make it work.
I mean, it's partial. I mean, to be honest with you, it is all day and that would be ideal. But there are some of us that have Sunday morning obligations that won't be there till noon. So, I mean, if you have to split the day, that's acceptable.
So, so it is the only reason I hesitate and I shouldn't sit on the microphone, is it is, it is the morning after a really big party I'm going to. So if you guys don't mind me, needing to be heavily caffeinated the next morning. I would love to be there, but I kind of held back because I wanted to make sure, I'm at a lot of these tables, right? So I wanted to make sure that I gave a chance to the other planning commissioners to be at this table, so.
I think it would be particularly helpful for you to be there with your skill set. But if somebody could cover the morning and then tag out you, you know, do you can tag out and?
Yeah, because I might be able to come in the morning and need to leave sometime mid-afternoon.
I think both of you would be great. So if you covered the morning and then when Kate gets over her evening, she can come in.
No, I'll be there, it's not that early, I'll be there. It's, I was just like, oh, I'm going to pick up.
Yeah, yeah, I get you.
The Detroit Historical Society gala is the name for it, so. But I don't have to run it this year, so.
Better yet.
Look at that.
I'll put, I'm putting it on my calendar. I just, you know.
Anyone else for all day or for afternoon? Or I would say definitely by the end of this week. I don't think April can hold it too much longer, but by the end of this week, if you've got either a half day or an all day that, that you can give and if you want to be at that table, please just let Justin and April know. And you can put me down, I'm.
Great. We appreciate it. I know it's a tough time of the year for, for everybody, so we.
No, it's just that. Start at eight or nine?
Yeah, I thought it was nine, nine to six.
I think nine, yeah, I hope.
Alrighty.
Well, it speaks to how much is going on that we have to do it on a Sunday. The only time we could find.
Thank you, Kulik?
I think we're here.
Oh, Incubizo.
Oh, that's right.
Oh.
Best, bester in.
Nine.
Nine.
Well, Rosewood.
Yeah, one street north, whatever that is, but.
Even better.
Okay. I have a lot of diet coke, so. So then the other question, at least my last administrative item is that our, our vice chair left us in Southfield. So we are going to need a new vice chair. I don't know if there are actual, like, a description of duties for the vice chair, but when I was vice chair, my, my key duties were supporting the chair, which in that case Sarah had a couple babies, another thing. Like, there were like some extended periods where she was gone, I did not plan on having any babies. So, but being able to sort of support the chair should they have an absence. But also I think really being able to be available for the majority of meetings because if something comes up, you're going to be tapped as the chair. It's a chance to, a chance to run meetings, get some practice at that if you're interested or if you already do it and you're like, yeah, I love to do that, even better. But, you know, also sort of prep for, we always want to make sure we're building our bench and transitioning to new chairs as well. So you've got two former, well, one former and current, you know, chair that are still here. So if there's anyone who's interested in being the vice chair, should they contact you, Justin? How do we do that?
Yep. And then I'll talk through Barb or Rich.
Or Rich.
How that'll all work. I, I think, trying to think, we had elections, the first meeting in January this year.
It's just for the next two meetings then, right?
Yeah.
You're going to do it for the next two meetings?
I'm pretty sure that person won't be bumped in January.
I wasn't, I wasn't necessarily going to, going to call for nominations tonight, but if someone wants to self-nominate tonight, I don't think there's a problem with that.
Justin will be the first to tell you, I can't be me. You'd be a great vice chair, seriously.
She would. All right, so if anyone is interested in that role, talk to Justin. And if not, we'll just have to nominate by the January. Any other administrative items from your end?
Nothing at the moment. I mean, as far as development goes, I, the city has not received any official plans, offers, or anything related to the Drayton Church, so we can't comment on anything because we have nothing to comment on, so.
What about Eaton Pinecrest? Where are we at with that? Like, what's the next?
They have to submit more information, which they're, we had a good meeting with them last week to set expectations and say, here's all the things you're missing, you can't, you know, this is not a formal submission because you haven't submitted everything. So I would expect, hopefully the next two weeks, we will have everything we need and then we'll decide if it's going to be December or beyond.
And part of the conversation, last time I asked Justin the question, that project, you know, we turned things around relatively quickly for Mike with that update, site plan and that sort of stuff. That, in addition to the public notice requirements, because of the commitment to notifying the neighbors, I think Justin's already set the expectation with the developer that even if you get me all of this information, we need some extra time to both review it and to notice the neighborhoods.
Yeah, it falls under our advanced notice policy, which is 500 feet around the property, which is, and, and of course, we have, you know, constant communication with the Southwest Ferndale Neighborhood Group. And so they're really good at getting the information out, which we appreciate.
And can you also reach out with Relic Township as well?
Yes.
Something has come up? Any neighbors on that side as well?
Yep, and they're actually within our mailing group too. So, but we've, we've reached out to the city or township as well.
Did somebody really put a giraffe on the property or is that just, was that a joke?
It happened. Not a real giraffe, but.
No, I know.
Keith's face made me.
We'll wait until our training meeting for that. Any other items from the table?
I just noticed that the Kulik Center is up for some discussions. I didn't know if that is something where it's kind of involving a school district, you know, their property, it's involving our recreation kind of department here. I'm just wondering if anybody is doing something with that from the planning commission or not.
I can provide an update on that if you.
Sounds like it's at the strategic planning.
Yeah, yesterday we appointed a citizens advisory group, which we've used for projects before. And there's a broad array. And there's a broad array, correct me, keep me honest, there's a broad array of skill sets there. To, to advise us, um, on what to do. I don't know what the timeframe is, but I would imagine they come back with something six months or so, right? And, uh, that's kind of the next step.
Councilman Delica probably knows best.
Yeah, and then we'll evaluate. Oh God, Gregor, you on it?
Did you sit here all night just to tell us this?
I, I'm, I'm not, no, um, I'm not on it. No, I was curious to know about the, um, the Woodward Heights project, because there were no drawings, so. It's a ten-panel, uh, citizens group, uh, led by April and Lorena.
Our city manager and our recreation director.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, uh, they're going to meet about four to six times between now and the end of February. And they, at the latest, will get us a report by the first meeting in March. Council meeting in March.
Wow, that's aggressive.
Yeah.
That is impressive.
We have a good track record with these citizens advisory groups and so. Um, I'm sure planning will have an opportunity to weigh in as well and, you know, review their recommendations that comes from the residents, so.
Yeah, that was my only thought on that is, I know it's very different than some of the other school sites that have come through, but since it is, um. A non-residential use right now inside of a residential district, um, it just is one of those ones that kind of bubble up to the surface pretty quickly, so.
It, it does only to, only because of the situation in the building is critical. I mean, we're really on a shoestring in luck that it's operating today, and it's heated. Yeah, and that's a Band-Aid on the Band-Aid.
For sure. Great.
One last item, just wanted to, in case everyone didn't know, congratulate Chair Baker on being the 2018 Citizen of the Year.
Wow, you had to do that.
Yep, had to embarrass you a little bit, um.
Because I didn't say it at the last.
Can you recreate your speech?
There was no speech, that's why you missed it.
But, yeah, we had a great event last week to celebrate a lot of the.
That was mortifying, I can't believe you did that.
Why? Had to do it, had to do it. Um, I was embarrassed last year for my award, so.
Yeah, it's well deserved, it's, yeah, no, don't be embarrassed, it's well deserved.
Um, and, you know, it was great to celebrate Kate at that event because she's obviously doing a lot, serving on inclusive housing committees and planning commission and. Whole host of other things, so.
I can tell you the discussion of it, I'm sure Dave mentioned it in his speech, but so many council people serve and then just disappear. And you, that you have not ever stepped back from public service.
It's because you keep letting me.
You're good at it and B, you're willing to serve, and it's, I think that's just an outstanding example, and, um.
We're in a community where you can serve, which is great.
But again, so many, to their time, check out and either move or go away. And, and you're the epitome of not doing that, and I really appreciate that. The power.
Thank you.
The ability to make design decisions.
I appreciate that, that was entirely appropriate. Anything else for administrative items, I mean, we lost our BZA liaison, anything? Probably haven't had a meeting in the last.
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, probably won't be a meeting for December either, so.
No BZ.
Oh, you actually, didn't you cancel, oh, no, you canceled the November meeting.
Yeah, but looks like we won't have an agenda for the BZA, um, but, um, definitely want to keep them. Involved with, you know, any ordinance changes, and so, uh, Ian's been helpful with that.
The only other thing I can think of is that the Detroit Planning Commission has started their gigantic zoning ordinance update, not a redo, just a humongous simplification. ZoneDetroit.org or dot com is the website. Pitch Black, the media company in Pleasant Ridge, is doing that, that website and keeping it up to date. I just got an email reminder because I went to one of the first public meetings about it. So, it just as, kind of you guys keep an eye, uh, it's a two-year process. But as you guys keep an eye on what's going on next door, ZoneDetroit.org, sounds like it's going to be kept pretty well up to date. All right, we will adjourn, I have no idea what time it is because I can't see, 10 after 9.
Good meeting.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Rich, I've got notes if you.
I'll take them.
All right. Thank you for looking at my texts. Of course. Oh, yeah, well, and then I, I counted when I came in and then I had to recount because I didn't trust my count, I was like, no, we're good, you can start. Yeah, yeah, we had six, so. We were good, so that is recycling, this is for Rich, this is ULI. Thank you for.
Thank you.